Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Monday, November 13th, 2023 workshop session of the Carmel Clay School Board. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here and accounted for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. As before we go into the pledge, I would like to ask that if you are, if there are any veterans or active service members in the audience, if you would stand with us and help us lead the pledge. So if you will stand first, and then we're going to stand after you, and we're going to go ahead and say the pledge. So if you are a veteran or a current service member, please stand. Thank you. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much. Dr. O'Stryke.
Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. I am excited to share with the board and our community that Carmel Clay Schools has been awarded the Indiana Department of Education Purple Star designation for all 15 of our schools here in the district. The Indiana Purple Star School Designation honors schools that have displayed a significant commitment to service members, veterans, and students and families connected to our nation's military. We appreciate our school board's support as they passed a resolution publicizing support for military students and families. Additionally, each school has an assigned point of contact for military families. They meet all grade-level training requirements. They have a dedicated district website, we do as a district, providing recognition and resources for service members, veterans, and students and families. We host an annual military program at every school, such as Veterans Day. We have a public military display in all of our schools recognizing service members, and we will ensure that military service members and their immediate family members, along with veterans, meeting minimum job qualifications for open positions at each school, will be guaranteed an interview. It is significant that all 15 schools in Carmel were awarded this designation. Out of the 64 newly awarded schools in the state of Indiana, representing nearly a quarter of the schools that were named came from Carmel. Of the nearly 1,800 schools in the state of Indiana, there have been 145 schools that have received this designation, and Carmel is a part of that 8% in the state of Indiana being designated as a Purple Star School. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize, if he would come into the room, I know he's listening, he's just outside the room, but Officer David Commodore, if he'd please come to the front for me real quickly. Officer Commodore is a Carmel police officer, and he is also our school resource officer at College Wood Elementary. Officer David Commodore is also a U.S. Army veteran who shared an incredible speech at our City of Carmel Veterans Day ceremony last week, as he was recognized as an outstanding City of Carmel employee, and we could not agree more. Let's please give a round of applause.[231.21][231.24](applause) Carmel Clay Schools is committed to our military and our veterans, and we appreciate the sacrifices that are made in order to protect the freedom that our community enjoys each and every day. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bearsford, who is going to introduce to us a very special student.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your service, and we really appreciate you being here with us tonight as well. I always had the pleasure and honor to go to the Carmel High School Veterans Day Program, and one of the people who presented at that program was a junior named Darcie Moffett. And she read an essay that really, I thought, was one of the most outstanding essays I've heard in a long time about democracy. And so I asked her if she would come and bless us with that essay, so now I'm going to invite Darcie to the podium. And she is the daughter of Eli and Katie Moffett. Eli's our language arts chair at Clay Middle School. So, Darcie, thanks for coming, and if you could just share your speech one more time, we'd greatly appreciate it.
I was fortunate to travel to Europe this summer on a school trip, and I was told that the most impactful thing I'd see would be the cemetery for the American World War II veterans. While I was sure that the cemetery would be very moving, I had my doubts as to the enormity of its impact. We were going to be seeing castles and national monuments. I'd seen a cemetery before, so how could it compare? But it's one of those sites that you have to see in person to understand. Each tombstone is positioned with great care, and when we leave the cemetery just right, the each row perfectly aligns, the tombstones seem to go on for miles. It left me with awe and gratitude, and to wonder why those men volunteered, knowing that one of those tombstones might be their own. Beyond their courage, kindness, and sacrificial nature, what drove our veterans to fight so generously for our country? You'll find that the answer lies in our democracy. From the very beginning of our nation, our soldiers fought to uphold the American dream. To downplay democracy's role in our nation's founding would be to ignore the very reason for its creation. Our government was created with the intent of giving unseen freedoms to people throughout our nation. Because of democracy, government participation is not limited to the elite. Instead, each citizen is able to choose who represent them and who they identify with. We can even participate as little or as much as we want. Anyone can be a politician, or an activist, or even a side liner, and no matter which we pick, we are given the opportunity to dive deeper for information about our passions. Things are not hidden, and our right to an understanding of the world around us is protected. Our democracy also gives us access to all that the world has to offer. As we explore new ideas, thoughts, and beliefs, we can choose which we accept. We have the freedom to do, learn, and think things that would otherwise be stifled without our democracy. But not only do we have the freedom of religion and to believe what we want, and the freedom of the press, which allows us insight into our government, but we have the freedom to say what we want about these things. The beauty of our democracy lets us not only enjoy these freedoms in the privacy of our own homes, but also in public throughout our nation. And this is where our democracy stands out. We can voice what we believe, and we may face opposition, but this is American democracy at work as well. Our democracy creates a complex and diverse country that thankfully is not guided by just one opinion. We can share our ideas, our hopes, and even our issues with our country. This attribute allows each citizen to be individualistic, but also to help us grow as a whole. As we freely voice our opinions, we can find the things we love and the things that need improvement, and ultimately, this freedom motivates our progress. Through these great attributes of our democracy, our government has the opportunity to become the best version of itself. While we share the joys of our democracy, we must acknowledge that not every place in the world is blessed with our same freedoms. There are people who have fought long and hard to ensure we can enjoy America's democracy. When our freedoms are threatened, our veterans selflessly answer the call to protect what makes our country so great. And whether or not we enjoy our democracy at all times, or agree with the government that our veterans fight for, we must acknowledge and appreciate the sacrifice that they have made, are making, and will make for us and future generations. They have the bravery to take on a vital role in the safety and freedom of each and every one of us, and without them, we may not be here today. Therefore, they deserve our utmost respect for their sacrifice. Thank you to our veterans.[492.62][492.65](applause)
Darcie, come on back up here if you would for a moment. Our future is bright. Our future is bright in Carmel because of our outstanding students that we have throughout our schools, and Darcie is just one of those who shared an outstanding speech and essay with us today. And, Darcie, our school board would like to honor you with this certificate for your amazing essay, and thank you so much for sharing that with all of us today.
Thank you so much, Darcie. We'll now move on to our Young Artist Awards with Dr. Dudley.
Well, thank you. It is my pleasure to honor our young artists for this next six-month period that we have, and we are very fortunate to have this wonderful artwork displayed in our boardroom so that we can enjoy it each day that we're in here. But before we introduce our young artists, I'd first like to give a shout out to our fantastic art teachers, and I know many of our art teachers are here today, and it's through their work that they do with our students to really help and grow the skills and the talents of our students each and every day, and we're just very thankful for our fantastic art teachers. So if you're an art teacher here in the room, if you could please stand to be recognized. So, students, when I call your name, if you would, please, you'll come up, and you will get a certificate from Dr. O'Stryke, and then if you'll come in front of the board table there and stand there and wait to get a picture taken, that would be fantastic. So we'll start with Ostara Zajak, a fourth-grade student from Carmel Elementary. Esther Young, a 10th-grade student at Carmel High School. Bella Roberti, an eighth-grade student at Carmel Middle. Riley Krueger, a fifth-grade student at Cherry Tree. Evelyn Godar, a second-grade student at Clay Center Elementary. Madison Bowser, an eighth-grade student at Clay Middle. Millie Wen, a first-grade student at College Wood. Isla Klutz, a seventh-grade student at Creekside Middle. Graham Palmer, a fifth-grade student at Forestale. Simone Downer, a fourth-grade student at Mohawk Trails. Porcella Stewart, a fourth-grade student at Prairie Trace. Jean Truex, a fifth-grade student at Smokey Row. Sri Dharma Puri, a first-grade student at Town Meadow. Sonia Van Kong, a third-grade student at West Clay. And Ian Moreauz, a second-grade student at Woodbrook Elementary. And congratulations to our young artists. Thank you, boys and girls, for sharing your fantastic artwork with us.[847.04][847.07](applause)
Parents, we have one more presentation, and then we'll take a short break, so then you can take a couple more pictures and be able to head out, as we know it's a school night. We now will do the Carmel High School Girls 2023 Golf State Champions, Mr. Enskeep.
I think it's good that our students are going to be famous artists someday, and they'll get used to paparazzi, because, you know, that's going to happen a lot as they get more and more successful.
Dr. Bearsford, President Browning, it is an honor to be here on behalf of Mr. Enskeep and Mr. Hester. It is always a great opportunity to recognize state champions, and tonight is no different that we get to recognize our 2023 state champion girls golf team. So I would like for you all to come forward. Coaches as well. I'm going to share with you just a little bit about their season. These will be just highlights, not everything that you all accomplished. So our girls golf team won the state championship on September 30th at Prairie View Golf Course here in Carmel. It was the second consecutive state championship for the program, and the fourth overall for the Greyhounds in golf. Here are some highlights from our season. The team posted the fifth-best score all-time at the state finals, while winning the team title by nine strokes. It is the first time the Greyhounds have ever won back-to-back state titles in girls golf. Senior Michaela Headley finished as a state runner-up individually for the second time in her career. Claire Swathwood and Headley earned first-team All-State honors. And I'm going to just ad lib here just a little bit. I will tell you, I got to witness and watch them play over the course of two days, and I think the amazing thing about it, I always, I get a little nervous, I talk to a couple parents, I'm like, I don't know how they do this when they're out there playing. But I will tell you, it is the most even keel group of athletes that I would say that we have at our school. They just show up, and over the course of two days, they just kept telling me, "Don't worry, we're going to be fine, we're going to be fine," even after day one, and we were, and you came out on top, we are so proud of you. Our head coach is a CHS alum, we won't say what year, Kelly Klusner, she's assisted by Coach Dan Patane, and Dan is a teacher at Clay Middle School. And we also have another coach, Taylor Petruck is not here tonight. So, we are so proud of them. Again, I think sometimes in Carmel, we get accustomed to winning state titles, but I will tell you, we need to celebrate each and every one, because you don't know when the next one may come. And so, we are, obviously, want to recognize them tonight. We're fortunate to have the opportunity to do that, and again, we are so proud of what you've accomplished. Now, we're going to have you do a little something that we typically do for this. You're going to share a name, grade, and kind of what your future plans are. And if it's to come back to Carmel High School, that's awesome. We welcome you back.
I'm Claire Swathwood, I'm a senior, and I will be playing golf at the University of Memphis next year.
I'm Sophie Mock, I'm a junior. I plan on playing lacrosse in college, I just don't know where yet.
I'm Michaela Headley, I'm a senior, and I'm playing golf at Purdue next year.
I'm Cameron Williams, I'm a senior, and I'm playing golf at Indiana Wesleyan next year.
I'm Kate Harding, I'm a sophomore, and I'm probably going to come back to Carmel.
I'm Maddie Headley, I'm a freshman, and I hope to play college golf.
Thank you so much to our girls golf team, thank you so much to our young artists. We will now take a short pause. If you would like to take a couple pictures or head home, it is a school night, so we will go ahead and do that. Thank you.
See, probably want to leave enough so they can see me. You know, you know what? They need to see the screen for now, so maybe just, yeah. You can put it in front of Colleen, just so they can see the screen. Put it, just put it in front of Colleen.
All right. I know you guys are setting up, and that's fine, we're going to go ahead, we do not have any public comment tonight. We will now move on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve consent? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will, for you parents, thank you first of all, who brought our hosts for this evening, we're so excited to learn about foundations tonight. After this is over, we will take a break, and you guys can head home, so we know that you guys have bedtimes too. So, thank you for being here. So with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So it's my pleasure this evening to share with you how we teach foundational skills in our earliest grades, and then you'll have the opportunity to come down and learn from some of our first graders, and how we teach those foundational skills, and you'll get to interact right alongside of our first graders. So we're excited to be here this evening to share that. So, our agenda this evening is first, we'll start with an overview of foundations, and that is the program that we use, and you'll learn more about that to teach our foundational skills. And then we will talk about why we chose this program, and then you'll have the opportunity, as I said, in action, to see it in action. We have Mrs. Lauren Piper, a first-grade teacher at Forestale Elementary School. And we have Mrs. Allison Weinreich, a reading interventionist at Forestale Elementary. So first, we'll start with that foundations overview. So looking at our foundations, foundations is the foundational skills is really looking at those skills that students need in order to be able to decode readily for the building blocks of reading. And foundations is a direct, explicit, multi-sensory approach to learning, so it includes decoding, spelling, and handwriting skills. And so when we talk about that direct and explicit, nothing is left to chance. We are being very explicit in our day-to-day lessons. The program helps our teachers to really break down the needs of our students and break them down into small chunklets so that they can continue to build upon in those foundational skills. And when we look at the multi-sensory, the students are able to see and say, they use movement in there. You might have heard the term in the past about drill and kill. It's not drill and kill with a bunch of worksheets, but it's more drill and thrill, where we're really engaging the students in that multi-sensory approach, where they're using all parts of their body to learn these foundational skills. This program is taught to all of our students in kindergarten through third grade, it's taught 30 minutes a day, it gives the teacher some detailed lesson plans and activities to support the teaching in the day-to-day instruction. It has a very well-articulated scope and sequence over the course of not only the year, but over the course of the four years that it is taught. It also has built-in progress monitoring as well as intervention. So we have some students that learn the skills right away, and they need just a little bit of support. We have other students that need maybe more support, or they need more time to learn, and this program has that built in so that we can make sure all of our students get to that mastery level, because these skills are so important. students get to that mastery level because these skills are so important and they're the building blocks throughout the rest of their lives that we, they have. It does have some extensive resources for the controlled or the decodable text for each unit as well. And then, also, it has home support guides, so activities for families to use at home. And you'll get an opportunity to see more of these as you interact. So, in our kindergarten program, well, first, let me start off with saying foundations is not a standalone program. It's not the only program in our literacy program. It is one part. It is talking about the foundational skills. The, it also, we, in other parts of our literacy is we have our poetry, narrative, informational books where they're also working on the comprehension side of that. So, this is one part of our literacy block, the foundations part. And so, in kindergarten, you'll notice that kindergarten has, starts with a heavy emphasis on phonological and phonemic awareness. And those might have been terms that you've heard in the past, but there's a very heavy emphasis on that in kindergarten and first grade. And when we talk about what that is, is the students need to be able to hear that the sentences are made of separate words, words are made of syllables, and the syllables are made of the sounds. And then, when you look at the sounds, the individual sounds are those phonemes. And students are able to segment and manipulate those different phonemes. And you'll have the opportunity to experience that this evening in some of our lessons. And so, as we help teach our students how to manipulate that smallest, those phonemes or the sounds that those letters made, eventually, we get, we start mapping those back to the actual letters. And that's where you would look at that phonics piece, where you look at the sound and the grapheme or the letter itself and know the sound that the letter P makes or the letter D makes. And you're wrapping those together, you're putting those together so that you can decode those words. And this is, as I said, these are foundational skills for all of our students because we may have some students that come to school, they come to kindergarten where they're already reading. But we want to make sure that they're able to decode because in some cases, they may be, they've learned to read by hearing, you know, books read to them over and over again. And they're, they may be doing whole word reading. But as they continue to move up, and sometimes it doesn't catch up to you until you get into middle school or into high school, that you can then decode those words and making sure that you have the skills to do that. As adults, we decode unknown words all of the time because we have those skills to do that. And we want to make sure that all of our students have those skills as we continue to move forward. In kindergarten, we also look at the ABCs or the names, the sounds of the alphabet. And also, looking at letters and sounds, the consonants and the vowels and the digraphs that those sounds make, make up. They look at high-frequency words and then also trick words that they're using. So, trick words are words that cannot be decoded or cannot be, they don't follow the same patterns as those. So, in first grade, we continue, we do advanced phoneme segmentation where the students that are manipulating those words, they may be blending them together, they may be segment, segmenting them, they may be changing the different sounds out. And you'll have the opportunity to explore that today. We continue to look at consonant vowels and digraphs, and consonant digraphs. They continue on their high-frequency words as well as their trick words. And then, they look at the affixes, so like S, S, I, N, G. And also, types of sentences and punctuation, and then expanding types of text. Also, another piece of this all the way through each grade level is the correct formation of letters. And in kindergarten, first and second grade, we, they're focusing on the formation of print. And then, when we move into third grade, we focus on the correct formation of cursive because there is a direct connection of the students being able to decode and then also to encode or write the words out into the, on their own paper. And there, there's that direct connection between the two. So, as we look into our second grade, we continue to build on our kindergarten and our first grade, the work that we're doing, we're expanding those vowel teams and those advanced vowel rules that the students are learning. There, we're expanding on the prefixes and the suffixes and the reading and the spelling. And then, continuing that expectations of the proper formation of print. And as we move into the third grade, it's that advanced morphology, advanced word study. We get into Latin suffixes as well in third grade and the grammar and the syntax. And as I said, we move into the legible cursive in teaching them how to write and then also read in cursive. Because we know, many people say, well, why do they need to learn cursive writing? Well, there's still a piece where people are writing in cursive, they need to be able to read that cursive. We do do so much digitally. There's not always in cursive, but we want to make sure that our students understand those, that correct formation in cursive. And we also want to make sure that they're able to read cursive writing as well. So, why foundations? We're going to start with a very short video.
What do we know about the complex process of learning to read? Surprisingly, a lot. Scientific research collected over the past four decades reveals what happens in the brain and what must happen in the classroom to enable skillful reading. Most children learn to walk and talk naturally without a lot of support from adults. But reading is different. Reading is not hardwired in the brain and the neural pathways involved must be developed through successful instructional experiences. Let's look at the reading brain. The parts of the brain that allow us to process sounds and recognize visual images are already in place at birth in the left hemisphere. However, the phonological assembly region is not intact at birth. This is the part of the brain that allows us to connect speech sounds with visual images such as letters and enables reading. And it must be built through explicit systematic phonics instruction and practice with decoding.
Okay. So, a couple of things that we want to point out here is that something, you know, learning to read, it's not a signal of intelligence, but it's rather, it's a process in the brain development that we need to be systematically and explicitly taught to all kids. Because as you saw in the video, that mapping is learned over that explicit instruction. And so, it, it just doesn't happen naturally. Like, students will learn, you know, naturally, they learn how to walk or they learn how to speak. But they need to have that hardwiring in order to learn how to read. And that is through, they gain that through that explicit instruction in school, also it could be at home as well, but that very specific explicit instruction. And foundations is a program that really helps us to give that explicit instruction in both our phonics program. And it's based in the science of reading and the research. We adopted this program three years ago in order to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. And one of the, whoops. I don't want to start that over again. So, you may have seen our, this graphic in the past as we're looking at Scarborough's reading rope. And so, looking at the pieces of, in order to be able to read, to be a skilled reader, you need both the language comprehension piece up there in the red and then you need the word recognition pieces down here in the blue. And our foundations program works on that word recognition. So, it's working on those areas of the phonological awareness, the decoding, and the sight recognition. But you need both of these equally in order to have that strong strand of rope. And sometimes where we see, we might have students that have some fraying and their rope is not as strong as necessary. And so, we want to make sure that we shore those up, we don't have any of that fraying. And so, that our students become those fluent readers and they, not only can they decode what they're reading, but they're also comprehending that. And so, as you can see, the language comprehension, our other pieces of our literacy instruction focuses on building that vocabulary, focuses on those language instructions, that verbal reasoning, the literary knowledge. But we need to have both of those areas in order to become those strong readers. So, now, I would like to invite you down to the table in front here. You all have a name tag. And then, I'd like to invite our students, your students, you also have a name tag there. And by the way, at the end of the night, you can take your name tag home. You can have an extra one to play school with at home.
They're ready.
You guys will do great.
They're gonna, they're ready to help you. Well, we are so excited to be here. Thank you for asking us at Forestdale to come. We work every day in the classroom on this and we've been working here at school and the kids today have been practicing and they're super excited to be here. So, I'm a reading specialist at Forestdale Elementary and I'm just going to kind of give you what you're going to be working through. And then, I'm going to let Mrs. Piper do her magic and teach everyone and work right through with it. I'm in Mrs. Piper's class every day. I'm also in classrooms kindergarten through third. So, I do this a lot in all the different levels. So, I get to see the whole process all the way through. So, today, we're going to break the lesson into parts. And the first part we're going to do has three parts. Normally, the, the students would be on the carpet with Mrs. Piper, but because of logistics, we're going to stay in our seats today. The first thing that she, that we are going to work on is Mrs. Piper's going to use our sound cards. These are used to demonstrate new sounds. At the beginning of the year, they go through the whole alphabet and all the sounds. But at this part in first grade, they just go through sounds that are new. They go through sounds that maybe are some troublesome and all the vowels. So, any new concepts or anything that she's noticing, maybe this is what we need to work on, this is what they're going to do. The pictures are great. As you'll see here in a second, they have the letter, they have a key word, and then the students will know the sound. So, it's a great way for them to remember it and to really use it to solidify that. That'll be our first thing. The second thing we're going to do is we're going to have Elizabeth come up. In the classroom, we have the students be the teachers and she's going to lead you through a sound exercise. She's going to point to a card and then she's going to say the sound and then you all will repeat the sound. And then, for our, for our third one, I'll bring it on over here in a second, we're going to have a vowel poster. And we're going to have Paxton be our teacher for the vowel poster. And it's really important with vowels that this is like the crux of learning everything is the vowels. So, foundations really knows the importance of that and has picked another section for them to practice this on. It extends out the sound and that really is shown through like different research that that really helps them to get that down. So, this is another activity and it's led by the students. So, it's something that they have ownership on and really enjoy doing.
Alrighty. So, we're going to start off with our learning intention for tonight. So, I will say it first and you guys will repeat it back to me. I am learning
I am learning.
to use glued sounds
To use glued sounds.
to read and write words.
To read and write words.
So, our goal by the end of today is to be able to read and write words with those glued sounds. Okay? All right. Let's go ahead and get started.
A, apple, A. A, duck, Q. Y, yellow, R. T, bat, B. U, U, Q.
So, we circled that because Q and U are buddy letters and they are always together. Very good. All right. Elizabeth, could you come up and lead us in seven letters here? We're going to repeat after, or we're going to, she's going to point to it and we're going to say the sound. Here we go. Q, U, Queen, Q. S, H, ship, S. L, L, wall, all. E, ed, S. Z, zebra, Z. Great job. All right. So, Paxton is going to come up. And Paxton is going to use our baby owl. And so, whenever we see the owl, we know that we have to repeat what he says. A, apple. E, ed. I, itch. O, octopus. U, up. Great job.
So, in the classroom at this time, the students would normally go back to their desk. We're already there, which is great. And they were, you were going to be working with at your desk area. You're going to have, everybody has a letter board. The students each have one of these in the classroom. The teacher's looks like this up in the front for her to model. So, we're having everyone do it. This will be a review that, things that they've already learned in the classroom. So, this is, part of the lesson would be something they're reviewing. Today, we're going to be reviewing bonus letters. Bonus letters are F, L, and S. They come at the end of a short word after a short vowel. So, we'll be practicing some with that. The nice thing about this with foundations is that it actually helps the students build so they're physically making the words, which is the kinetic about it. Really nice job with that. And the other thing that's good about it is that it has everybody participating. They're not just watching one person doing it up here. Everybody's involved. And it gives the teacher and myself when we're walking around seeing maybe somebody who needs a little extra practice later on or those that got it and were ready to move on to the next.
All right. So, we're going to start off today reviewing bonus letters. Can anyone tell me what a bonus letter is? Hazel? Okay. It's F, L, or S. When would we use a bonus letter? Olivia? Yeah. After a short vowel, if the word ends in F, L, or S, right? Okay. So, today, what we're going to do is we are going to be building some words that have bonus letters, okay? So, to start, what we're going to do is I'm going to say a word, you're going to repeat it back to me. Then, we're going to tap it out. When we tap it out, we always use our thumb as the base and then we use our fingers to tap each letter. Okay? So, the first word we're going to spell is fill. Say it. Let's tap it. I, O. Fill. All right. Let's go ahead and spell it on our board. What's that first sound? F. I, I. I. I, O. L. Why do we need that bonus L? Why do we need that bonus L? Hazel? Yeah. Because we hear that short vowel eh, so we have to use that bonus L. If you notice, your bonus L will be down below. It's not in the regular set of cards. Very good. Now, we talk about marking it up. So, we want to know that it's special. We see these bonus letters. How are we going to mark up this word? If you're not sure, you can look here. Here's the bonus letters. Elliot, could you come up and mark this up for me? I see that you did it right away. I might have a marker somewhere. Thank you. Perfect. So, he's going to put a star on that second L because it's a sound that we don't tap out. We just have to know that it's there. All right. So, after we spell a word, we're going to spell away. Let's start with F. Here we go. But you can spell away. F. I. O. Bonus L. Very good. All right. Let's review one more word. This time, the word is mess. Say it. Let's tap it. M, A. Mess. Very good. Let's spell it. M. M. M, A. Very good. E. M, A. S. Very good. S, very good. Alright, I think we're done. Right? M E S? Oh, Charlotte, I see you saying no. What did I forget? The bonus S, yeah. And why do I have to add that bonus S? Olivia? Short vowel, we heard eh, so we have to double it, right? We have to add that bonus letter. Alright, Paxton, how am I gonna mark this up? Come on up here and show me. You can do it on your board while you're waiting for Paxton. Very good. Yeah, that's great. Are we sure to mark it? Awesome job. We put a star on that bonus letter. Great work. Alright, first graders, spell away. M. E. S. Bonus S. Very good. Got ourselves an overachiever back there.
So now, this part of the lesson would be our new concept. And today, we're gonna be talking about glued sounds. And if you're anything like us, we didn't learn glued sounds when we were in school. This is something new. So if you have a student in school and they come back and say a glued sound, that's something, language we had ever heard of. So a glued sound is a one where it has a vowel and the consonant changes the sound of the vowel. For example, all. You wanna say ah, oh, right, for sounding it out, which it's not. It's changing, the L is changing it, like an am or an. So we wanted to highlight this one today 'cause it's something new that we may have not learned when we were in first grade, second grade. So today, Mrs. Piper will be introducing the card, talking about the different components of what it is and showing a special way to finger tap it. You saw earlier how they were tapping each sound. This is a little different, something to highlight. So it's getting them moving and doing it, saying it out loud, and seeing it in action. So all the ways of really learning this new concept.
Alrighty, so today, we're gonna learn something new and this goes back to the learning intention of the glued sound. Can you say glued sound? Alright, so today, we're gonna learn a glued sound. So the glued sound that we're gonna learn today is A L L. And when we see A L L, it changes what you would normally think it would sound like, right? We think we would say ah and then we see oh. We still see those bonus letters, but because we add that bonus letter on there, it changes the A sound from ah to ah. So now we have ah and oh. We're gonna put it together to say all, okay? So when we see this card, we say A L L, ball, all. Let's try it. A. Ball. All. Very good. And so when we have A L L, we tap that as one sound, okay? It is two sounds, but we're gonna tap it as one. So if we, for example, are gonna tap out ball, we're gonna take that first sound, buh, and then we're gonna glue these next two fingers together. Alright, go ahead and glue your fingers together. Yep, there you go. And we're gonna take those two fingers and we're gonna tap them to our thumb because those sounds are glued together. They don't come apart and when we see them, we don't tap them out ah, oh. We tap them together, all. So we say buh, all. Very good. That's tricky. If that's too tricky for you, it's okay to tap it with one finger, but for our brains, it's better if we try it with two, okay? Alrighty, so we're gonna practice tapping and spelling some words. Alright, so since we practiced tapping the word ball, let's try it. Ready? Bu. All. Ball. How would I spell that? Bu. Bu. Charlotte? B. Bu. And then what? All. What sound says all, Paxton? A L L. So look, I have this nice green card that has all the sounds on it that I can put together to build the word ball. See how that works? Alright, so now I need to do something to mark it up, to tell my brain, hey, Mrs. Piper, those letters stick together. What can I do? Elizabeth, what can I do to it? Or you wanna come up and show us? Alright, I like it. What could I do? Very good. Those letters are glued together, so we put them in a box so that they stay together. See how that works? Alrighty, let's spell away. B. A. L. Ball. Alright, I'm thinking of another word that we could spell, right? There are lots of walls in here, alright? So I'm thinking of the word wall, right? Alright, let's try to tap that out. Are you ready? Here we go. Wuh. All. Check and make sure, is the person sitting next to you tapping with those two fingers glued together? Alright, we're all glued together. I like it. Wall. Alright, how are we gonna spell it? Wuh, wuh, wuh. Hazel? W, wuh, wuh, wuh. All. What do you think, Elliot? A. L. Wuh, all. And how would I mark this up? What do you think? Charlotte, could you come up here and do it for me? Might have to scooch that chair back a little bit. Wuh, all. Oh, there you go. You got it. Very good. Now, some students also like to remember that all is a bonus letter. Anyone remember what we do for bonus letters? Paxton? We put a star on top. So sometimes, you'll see students also put a star on top to remember that that bonus letter is what changes the sound in all. Alright, let's spell away. W. A. L. L. Wall. Very good. Alrighty, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna take that new concept of all and we're gonna try it out, okay? So Mrs. Weinrich is gonna tell us a little bit about what we're gonna do next.
The next thing we're gonna do is dictation. So in front of you, you have a dry erase board. Can you hold that up for me? And it has three boxes on the top on one side and then it has three different writing lines on it. So after Mrs. Piper would gather her whole class over and she'd show this to them and they'd read some of the words, they learn how to tap it, now we wanna see if they can apply it each individually themselves. So they would either have a book, we have it, or they would do the dry erase board. For today, we just had the dry erase board to do. So they are gonna do sounds. She's gonna give some sounds that we're working on. They'll say the sound, you guys will write the sound. Then she'll do some practice words and then we'll even do a sentence. With the sentence, it's important to note that there are also trick words in our sentence. The words that they cannot tap out and spell. We are teaching them how to use a dictionary and things later on in life. This is their book which they're gonna practice today. We brought it from our school, so you could see it. And it has lots of different references in it and they do a great job of looking, looking things up in it and using it. So they will be using this during this part of the lesson. Mrs. Piper already has one up there that looks just like it, so she'll be modeling along with you. And if you could turn your board so it looks just like hers.
So there's two sides. If yours has like big lines on it, go ahead and just flip it over. Awesome. So that it looks like mine. Alright, we're gonna start today with our three sounds. These are sounds that might be tricky, alright? So you're gonna write your first sound in the first box. The first sound that I want you to write today is write the letter that says eh. Very good. I like how you guys repeated that back to me. Write the letter that says eh. Good. I heard my friend Elizabeth here remind her partners, remember to write in lowercase letters. That's important for us in first grade. Alright, and what's, what's letter did you write for eh? Olivia? You wrote the letter I. Very good. In the middle box here, I want you to write the sound that says quah. Quah. Okay, what letter did you write for quah? Elliot, what'd you write? Q and U. Why did you write both of those? Yeah, they're buddies, right? They stick together. If we're gonna spell a word, we're gonna use Q and U for the quah sound, right? Very good. Alright, the last sound I want you to write is all. All. What did you write for all? Paxton, what did you write? A. L. Very good. And that's our new glued sound that we learned today. A L L. Oh, I noticed some of you are putting a box around A L L. Why did you put a box around A L L, Hazel? Yeah, 'cause it's a glued sound, right? They stick together. Very good. Okay, on this first line, we're gonna rewrite a review word. Remember, we reviewed bonus letters earlier in our lesson, alright? So on this first line right here, remember to use those handwriting lines. We're going to write a word. The word is puff. Say it. Let's tap it. P. Puff. Alright, go ahead and write it. Puff. Olivia, you did a great job. Do you think you could come up and write it on our board? While you're waiting for Olivia to write this, see if you can mark up that word. Puff. It's nice and big, isn't it? That's okay. Good. Did you remember your bonus letter? Very good. And we put a star on the second F to show that that one is the bonus letter. Very good. Alright, now we're gonna do a current word, okay? A word we, this, today, we learned the glued sound all, so we're gonna make a word with the glued sound all, okay? Now, I like to go shopping at the mall, okay? So we're gonna write the word mall. Say it. Let's tap it. M. All. Mall. Very good. I want you to use that same line as puff, just so that we have some space for our sentence down here. Mall. Very good. Charlotte, do you think you could come write it for me? You did such a good job on your board. Perfect. I like it. Yeah, you did great. Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have the marker? Alright, let's write it right over here. Mall. How did you guys mark up this word? What'd you do, Elliot? Ooh, I can see Hazel did the same thing. She's giving me the same sign, so without even speaking, I know she's got it. Very good. Mall, M, A, L, L. You put a box around that glued sound and you even put a star on the bonus letter. Nice work. Okay, now we're gonna move on to our sentence, alright? For our sentence, I will say it, you will repeat it, then we will count the words in the sentence, alright? And then we will move on to writing it. I will tell you which words are trick words. If you are one of my first graders, it would be really helpful if you could share your trick word, trick word book with someone sitting next to you, okay, because they don't have one. So we always look up all of our trick words and then anything that's not a trick word, we have to tap out, okay? Alright, our sentence today, the hall is a mess.
The hall is a mess.
Let's count the words. Ready? The hall is a mess. How many words?
Five.
Five, okay. So, we're gonna start, I'm gonna try to spread it out here. The, why did I put this big tall one at the beginning? Why did I do that, Paxton? Yeah, we start every sentence with an uppercase letter, right? Okay, the hall is a mess. Put them all on there? Alright, the is a trick word. I'm gonna circle it. Hall, that's one you have to tap out. Think about everything we learned today. Is, that's a trick word. A, that's a trick word. Mess. That's one you're gonna have to tap out. Did I get everything in my sentence? Oh, Charlotte, right away you said no. What did I forget? An exclamation mark. Why would I use an exclamation mark? What do you think, Olivia? Right at the end of my sentence, I'm gonna use a punctuation mark, but remember the way I said it? The hall is a mess, right? I sounded very excited about it, alright? So we can end it with our punctuation mark. Alright, go ahead and get started on your sentence. The hall is a mess. Even if we know how to spell the, we still look it up just to double check. Awesome job. The hall is a mess. The hall, hall, is a mess. When you're done, I want you to check your partner's work, okay? Because we don't wanna say ah, right? So I'm noticing that you might need to go down to the next line, right? We don't wanna try to squeeze it in there. There you go. Good work, Paxton. The hall is a mess. It does have spinger spaces, okay? Wow, first grade, good work. He might be. I like it. Alright, help me out, the. Hazel, help me out. Like this? T-H-E? Capital T, oh my goodness. Is it okay that I forgot a capital T? Is it okay to make a mistake? Is it okay to fix it? Awesome. The, what's my next word? Paxton, help me out. Hall, how do I spell it? Very good. The hall, that's a trick word. What is it, Olivia? Is, help me spell it. I-S, the hall is. Elliot? A, how do I spell it? Oh, I just A. A. Last word. Elizabeth? Mess, help me out. Very good. How did you end your sentence? Paxton, you look really excited. How did you end your sentence? Okay, which one? Like a question mark? An exclamation mark, okay. Very good. Check and make sure your board looks like mine. The hall is a mess. If you marked it up, great job. Hall has that glued sound bonus letter. Mess has that bonus letter. Did you start your sentence with the capital letter? Did you end it with a punctuation mark? Alright, way to go, first grade. Give yourself a pat on the back. Say I'm awesome. Go ahead and erase your board and put everything away.
It's a good one in their class. So we have shown you a lot of the spelling part of foundations, but there's also the reading part of foundations. So in Mrs. Piper's class, she has little packets made, and these are practice packets for fluency. They have the sounds on that, so each student can say the sound and practice it. She has words for them to practice reading. And she has trick words. And then phrases, because we want them to be able to read like we speak, in fluently with it. On top of that, there are also, as a class, a story that goes along that everyone, oops, everyone reads together. So all of these are words that they can tap out and sound. We found out through the science of reading, it is very important that we have a lot of decodable text for students, especially at this age. So the only words that they would not be able to tap out or know from this would be a trick word, which they're learning in a different way. So the whole class would go over this. As you can see from their scoops, they've done this one before. This is how they would read the phrase together, like, "The hall was such a big mess." And then they would repeat that. And, and they have that book also available for them, everyone in their classroom. Also, we have a lot of decodable books that go along with these skills. The reading team at my school just wrote a grant to get even more additional decodable text for them. These are very, very popular at our school. And at the back, they're bonus letters. So it's exactly what they're working on. It's a, and if you remember decodables when we were young, the stories weren't that great. These are like comic books. So the kids really enjoy it and feel like, oh my gosh, yes, this is one I wanna read. We have several different ones. There's some all books in here. There's some bonus letters. And for every skill that's available. So she could either start with a student, maybe they're still working on their letter sounds. Or maybe they're just working on their words. Or maybe just phrases, or maybe they're ready for books, but they're all still working at some part of that skill. So it's not only just, as you can see, the actual spelling of it, it's also the reading, which is, as we showed, shown from the rope, very important for all of it. I'm gonna pass some of these out so you can look at them.
And I would choose these books specifically to go along with this lesson, because you will see many glued sounds in these books, so we can reinforce that skill that we're learning as a whole group in foundation. So this would just be another part of the literacy block that we would do. We have both fiction and nonfiction books that we read in these decodable texts. So this is like what I would do in like a small group. So when I'm pulling kids back to work with me, if we're reinforcing the skill, I would use this packet. If they're still working on their letter sounds, we would start there. So it kind of differentiates for each student.
So if we could, we'll bring this back together now. And I just wanna, you know, sum this up with this quote up here from Dr. Louisa Moats. Where teachers are the most important factor in student success. Informed teachers are our best insurance against reading failure. While programs are helpful tools, programs don't teach, don't teach, teachers do. And so this evening, we shared a program that helps to support our teachers. But we also gave you an opportunity to see two of our finest teachers to share how our first graders learn those foundational skills. And we're very excited to have our first grade students that came to help us to learn more about foundations. You guys did a fabulous job. Thank you. And Mrs. Weinreich and Mrs. Piper, thank you so much for sharing your evening with us and also sharing your students and your knowledge of this. So at this time, we'll ask if the board has any questions, and Mrs. Weinreich or Mrs. Piper or myself can try to answer those.
So this was the best. Thank you so much for bringing them. Kids, you did so good. I learned lots of things. So thank you so much for being here. My question really is, is, so this is starting in kindergarten with learning like the letters and kinda going on. So after, and this may be Dr. Dolly too for you, so after third grade, does the fourth grade, do they can kinda continue on even they're not doing foundations? Are they like taking what they've already learned and continuing?
Yes, they are. Just it's a different program. So there, a lot when you get to fourth grade is with morphology. So they're focusing a lot of that, like, why do you add an E-D to a word, prefixes and suffixes? There's a lot of times if they need materials, the third grade foundations has a lot, so we have offered that to them. They're doing words their way right now with that, so that would be a program. But if they needed something with it, we have so much, much resources that we can definitely use it in there with it. But they do continue with the skills and just elevate it to the next level, cuz that's about where their different standards are with that.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Kristen?
I have a first grader, so I get some of this at home, but I like hearing more in-depth about what he's doing at school. But I do have to say that he really loves to come home. He really does have fun doing foundations. And he comes home and is excited to share with me, so just so that you know that that's, I'm hoping that's what other families are hearing as well. But he comes home and he's excited to show me, teach me about diagrams and trick words and things. So it seems like a really engaging program.
I love to hear that. It's very engaging. The students are engaged from the time we start to the time we finish.
And I'd say that's throughout. Kindergarten all the way to third grade. In third grade, we really take a lot of the skills and what you're learning right now and elevating it. Like we were just doing a bonus letter with a multi-syllabic word. And so they had to think about what they had learned in first grade. They're like, well, wait a second, it's at the end of a short word. And I said, well, there's actually a little bit more to that rule or at the end of a syllable. So they're all like, what? So then they were taking something they had learned in first grade and then in third grade and seeing how really it does translate into later on. You know, sometimes when they're like, why are we learning this? It really does go into some of these words. So we'll show some really large words up there, and they're amazed, I'm amazed, at how they can read them, mark them up, and do different things like that. So I will say, I really loved watching how we implemented this program and just seeing the students who have actually been able, starting it at kindergarten and going through, it's really impressive.
And I would say that the materials are fantastic. But again, it's the teachers that make it so very engaging and that continuing, ongoing professional development for our teachers to really make sure that they're using those materials in the very best way. And that, that is a piece that is just a credit to our teachers that work so hard each and every day.
I was gonna say, one thing we do at Forest State to champion that with our teachers is that there are four reading teachers at our school, and we go in and push into classrooms and help. So we're there right with another certified teacher, cuz we think it's very important to really solidify that part of the rope for success. So two certified teachers in there really hitting it and knowing all the things behind it, really, I feel like has been very impactful. We're blessed at our school to have those resources and have those certified staff.
I just was gonna comment too, like as a speech therapist, I, I understand that science of reading and I just really, really appreciate that the teachers kind of were, are implementing this new program and that it's, you know, I guess it's three years. So it's not new, but it's newer to the district and just especially the phonics and the phonemic awareness part is just really essential to those foundations of reading.
Thank you. Any more other board questions? Alright, thank you all so much. Thank you, parents. Thank you, kids. And would you just leave this here? What would you like us to do? High five?
And boys and girls, you could also take your name tag. You can take that home. And then board members, you can just leave everything else there. We'll get that after them. Yes, you may.
And parents, you guys can go ahead and, if you would like, you can go ahead and head out. Thank you so much for making the trip and for spending time with us this evening. Alright. We'll now move on to our first action item of the night, bid awards for the Carmel High School Polytechnic addition and renovation, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is for the renovation or addition primarily, and also some renovation of the polytech area. We really need additional space there because that's a very growing program, which we're also excited about. So we had, the amount of the bid award is fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. We had very good participation, which is good news, because for a while, you know, for the last year or two, it's been very difficult to, to get sufficient numbers of bidders. And so the importance of that is, is we can see by the bid tabulation that this is the cost to build this building. I mean, the mar, at the end of the day, the marketplace tells us what it's gonna cost. And because we have multiple bids that, and several are close together, they're all looking at the same project, and, and we know that they're, they're competitive and they're within the range. Bad news is that the project's about two million dollars over what the final estimate was. And as you know, we've, we've been having that for the last couple of years. We think we'll be okay financially. There are several projects that we have not bid yet. And in the context of the millions of dollars for the 23 projects, and then as you know, we have seventy, over seventy million dollars in 2024. So we will be, be okay financially, I'm, I'm certain of that. But I did want you to know that the project did go up. It turned into a rather expensive project in part because there was extensive relocation of utilities. If you're familiar with the area, it's on the, on the north side of the high school. And there were significant underground utilities. And so the, the very space that we needed to add the addition, the site work was costly. And so, but it is a project that's very much needed. As always, we, as we go through the process of design, there's a number of people that's, that participates in that process. And so we really, as we always do, we, we question to be, to get ourselves satisfied that, that whatever we're doing, that this is what's needed to support our educational program. And so I would recommend that you award these bids.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the bid awards?
So moved.
Second? Second?
Thank you. Discussion. Greg?
Yeah, just a question on the overrun. Is it due to inflation? Or is it due to like the surprise of the costs of moving utilities that we just didn't catch it?
It's really, well, we cut the utilities, so, I mean, that was in there, so we, we, that was in the estimate as well. But it's all, everything that you described, one of the things that's happening is there's, there's a tremendous amount of construction in central Indiana. And contractors, like most employers, certainly including ourselves, are finding it difficult to, to employ the number of staff that they would need. And therefore their, their marketplace now is they're in a position to really pick what jobs they're, because they have more work out there than they can, than they can do. In fact, we're cautious about that because we don't want a contractor getting too, too aggressive or whatever and then find that they're unable to perform the job. And so that's also contributing, and ultimately that's basically, looks like inflation, which we've seen significant amount of that in the last three years for sure.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I, thank you, Mr. Rick Michael. I know site preparation very oftentimes, because that is-
I know site preparation very oftentimes, because that is, uh, a hidden surface, that one cannot always anticipate where the utilities lie. Is this part of the money that we're working, we're do, part of the project that we're doing with the rest of Hamilton County? So, or is this solely where the, um, the technical training center that was going to be in place of, um, Javert Light?
No, this, this is entirely a Carmel project.
Okay.
Yeah, how long ago was the estimate made?
Uh, shortly before the bids were taken. Um, I don't know exactly offhand, but I would say within a matter of weeks. A, a challenge that, that our construction management company has is, is in, in today's world, um, you can't rely on whatever a project bid even, even a few weeks ago, because the price just changes. And, um, so, uh, most of it's been around for a while. I've not seen an environment like this. And so, uh, and it's not just in Carmel. We've, you know, others are, are having the same challenges, trying to, to get a fix on, on cost. And some of you may remember that, uh, when we built the two new, what, I still refer to them as the two new elementary schools, but they've been open for a couple of years. But, uh, it was during, started then, really, where we were, prices were just really escalating quickly.
So we do the estimate ourselves, or did we have one of the contractors?
Well, no, our construction management, uh, Skilman Corporation, um, does the estimate. That's part of what their responsibility is.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of approving the bid award for the Carmel High School Polytechnic addition and renovation, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um, Mr. McMichael, we now have change orders six point two to six oh four. We will vote on these separately, but if you wanna go through them together, you can.
Okay, so I'll just start, uh, with the high school, and, um, that's a, uh, change order for the performing arts, and it is in the amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. And, um, then the second change order is, um, a D-DUCK change order, uh, and it's a, um, a credit for an unused allowance, and it's two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And then we have change orders, uh, it's referred to as the, uh, Carmel Life and Learning Center Finishes, and it's twelve thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, but I would point out that seventy-six hundred dollars of that is a chargeback situation. So, uh, most of that'll be charged back.
Do you wanna go through the other ones?
Oh. That's all I've got.
Oh, I got it.
Three of them.
All right. Do I have, um, we're gonna start with six point two. Do I have a motion to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition and renovations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving? Oh, Greg?
Yeah, just the, it, it looks like the, um, the drywall part of the project is what's really driving it primarily. Could you talk a little bit to that and as far as what, uh, why was that part of a change? Or what, what made it a change?
Well, the first one I see was, I don't know all the specifics on this beyond what is in front of you, but, um, it notes that it was a, there was an unforeseen condition on the existing wall when they opened it up for renovation, and so in order to have it look right, it, um, it was, uh, closed back up with, uh, you know, new drywall. You see that in two, you know, two or three areas, as you noted. Those things, in a, in a renovation project, you're, we're much more susceptible for, to unforeseen conditions, particularly in a project like this, where we did extensive renovations and took out, you know, many walls and, and, uh, and reconfigured a lot of this space.
That was gonna be my question too, is it looked like a lot of it was just, for safety reasons, things had to be done to make it a safe space, um, for students and the public.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of approving change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts addition and renovations, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Five to zero. All right. We now will, I'll take a motion to approve change order six point three for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center roof replacement. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion. Okay. All those in favor of approving the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center roof replacement, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. The final change order, do I have a motion to approve six point four for the CLC Interior Finishes remodel? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All right. All those in favor of approving the change order for the CLC Interior Finishes remodel, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. McMichael, and thank you so much to our friends in the back who've worked so hard on this. We appreciate it. All right. We will now move on to, um, our 2024 school board meeting dates. Those were provided. I haven't heard anything on that. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion on those dates? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Five to zero. All right. We will now move on to the discussion portion of our meeting. Um, I did wanna make up, bring up, and I forgot to bring it up when I did action. Usually in a workshop session, workshop session, we do very limited action items. Um, our November twenty-seventh meeting is, um, we had to change it due to some board, um, availability. It will be at eight AM on the twenty-seventh. These discussion items will not be brought forth at that meeting. They're gonna be at the December thirteenth movie, 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 meeting, eighteenth. Thank you. So these discussion items, we're gonna hear, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Dudley. They will be at the December eighteenth meeting. Our December twenty-seventh meeting is gonna be just a very small consent, um, agenda that's gonna be in the morning. All right. Tea it up, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening for discussion, I have, um, two policies. One is an existing policy that is, um, looking at the selection and review of instructional materials. This policy, we have, um, made some proposed revisions to, um, change this policy, because we've always had a policy looking at the review of materials, and the policy was looking at both classroom materials that we're using in the classroom, as well as the review of materials that are in our media center. Um, the legislators, um, had new law put into place in the last legislative session, and so, um, what we did was we took those policies and we separated them. So the first policy are changes of the review of instructional materials that are pertaining specifically just to classroom materials. And the, the proposed changes in that first policy, um, remove the materials that are in the media center. Then the second policy, policy fifty-five twenty-two, that is the new proposed policy, and that is specific to the selection review and the removal of school library materials. So these are materials that are housed in our media center. So they might be books, they might be movies, uh, magazines, anything that we have in our media center, in our catalog for all of our, um, media centers. And so this policy, um, looks at, it's very similar to our existing policy, but the changes in this is the legislature, um, uh, passed legislation saying that the policy needed to include, um, two areas that were not in our existing policy, where we're looking at, um, obscene matter or performance as it's defined by Indiana code, as well as the matter or performance harmful to minors, as it is defined by Indiana code. And so those two, that verbiage is in this new policy that has not been in our existing policy, and that is due to, um, the new legislation that we have. So this policy, you know, as, as we said, we've always had an existing policy, and we, um, have a process as what, how we select materials, and it is a very, um, intentional process that our media specialists go through as they look at the needs, the interests of our students, the needs and interests of teachers in the building, as well as looking at how are we making sure these materials in our media center are supporting, um, what's happening in the classroom, um, looking at that relevance, uh, you know, representing various viewpoints, um, of our students, looking at the individual program needs and those requests. But no matter how, um, intentional and how careful that selection process is, you may have objections to materials that might be in our media center, and so that's what this policy helps line out, um, the requirements for that. And then with this policy, we have, the policy states that the superintendent shall develop administrative guidelines that fulfill this policy, and those administrative guidelines that you have in your board packet line out the very specific nature of what the process is. So if we have, um, parents, or if we have students, or if we have community members that live within Carmel Clay Schools boundaries, um, and they have a concern about materials that are housed in our media center, um, there is a whole process in here that they can follow where they can first start with our media specialists in the buildings and share their concerns there, and if there's no resolution, then we have a form that they can fill out, and they can share their concerns specific to what they believe is the obscene, um, matter, or the matter or performance that's harmful to minors, and looking very specifically at the language in the law of those two areas. And so there is a form that they would fill out, and then, um, Dr. Bearsford would convene a committee that would come together and review those materials and then make a recommendation to the board, um, for then the board to act on it. And so that's what those, the changes in the first policy and then the new proposed policy that we have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Go for it, Greg.
Um, yeah, I said, notice that these, um, Indiana code that describes obscene and harmful is really not new. It's been out there for, I think, a few decades. I don't know exactly how long ago, but it's, the way I read the new legislation, it's just trying to really make an emphasis that this is to be, um, taken a little more seriously. And I know we've had some books in the past that, um, were brought to the attention of the board. Some were removed, some were not. And I've gone through personally myself and looked at some of the books that are on some national sites that are of concern, and we still have some of those books, quite a number of them out there. So I'm, my question is, the, the legislation is, legislators have really tried to make this a point that we go implement this differently than whatever we may have done. So I, my first question would be, what will we do once we approve the policies? What would be the next step? If you could explain that, talk to that, please.
So, so as I, I shared, we've always had a review process for materials. What's different, what the legislation is, um, sharing is the very specific, the definitions. See, and you're correct in that, um, definition of obscene or matters that are performance or harmful to minors. That has been in the, um, law, but it wasn't a requirement in our policy. So what's different is that is very specific in the policy, and then our process, that if we do have a patron that objects to materials, because we don't have, you know, the selection process, we, we don't believe that we have materials that are obscene or, um, harmful to minors in our media centers. However, we may have patrons that have a differing viewpoint on that, and so they'll have the opportunity to fill, you know, review the materials, they'll have the opportunity to put where they feel as if they might be obscene or they might be harmful to minors, and so they'll have that opportunity to put that very specifically in writing, and then what is different is then we would have that committee that would then review all of that, that material, and then they would bring that to the board. Um, and our review process in the past, there was a level that it did get to a committee, but it did not always get to the committee, and so that's the piece that is very different in that, that they share their concerns with the media specialist, and then they move right into filling out the form and then moving into a committee, and so that is different than in the past in our other, um, review process.
Yeah, but I understand the, the appeal process. Um, I, what I was referring to is, will the librarians and the media specialists be going through any training about those two elements that have been emphasized and added to the code that says, when you're reviewing materials to be considered to come into the libraries, are we gonna look for harmful content, harmful to minors, or obscene content? Or are we gonna rely on, you know, the public and parents to find these things and then bring it to the intention and go through an appeal process?
So our media specialists have ongoing professional development on the selection of, uh, materials, and actually this week, many of our media specialists are at, um, our library, um, annual convention right now, and, and the work that they do, they have that ongoing, um, training in how are they building and curating their collection? Um, and again, let me say, we do not believe that we have obscene materials in our media centers. Our media specialists do not choose obscene materials. However, we may have patrons that disagree with that, um, but we have that ongoing professional development, and we will share with them to make sure that they understand the, um, very specific language that is in the law of what, when they define obscene matter or performance and matter or performance harmful to minors. We will make sure that our media specialists have that ongoing professional development and understand exactly, um, how the law is defining that. But again, we have, we continue to have that ongoing of how are you, um, curating your collection, and then how are you, we go through, and we also have processes where we weed the collection out, um, based on needs, based on differing, um, you know, we might find that we are weeding different collections out because there's lack of interest or there's lack of a need of those materials. And so that's an ongoing piece that we continue with our media specialists.
I have, um, a couple of comments. One is, I want to point out that our media specialists are highly trained, and their sole training and education is specifically on how to pick relevant materials that represent a wide range of backgrounds and thought processes and cultures, so that's to certainly be applauded. Also, I would disagree with, um, Mr. Brown that the law was not changing, but merely, um, reclassifying or making it more specific. So the law, to my understanding, is that a book must be shown to lack serious literary or artistic value. So it's not saying that all of a sudden there are lots of obscene books. It says it really must, it's actually raising the bar, the bar higher in, from what I've read. I know in the past, you have brought out that you have several books that you would like to proactively remove from the library. Wide Awake, Breathless, Jesus Land, The Perks of Being a Wall Falter, Kite Runner, Monday's Not Coming, or Me, Earl and the Dying Girl. So you mentioned that you had looked on a national database for those books. Did you indeed read them?
I've, I did not read the whole books. I've got, I've got one here. I can read some passages.
No, I'm not asking you to read any passages. What I'm asking is cherry picking a passage does not rise to the level of what the law states, that the entire book must lack serious literary or artistic value. So precisely what you've done by looking on the website and then cherry picking a, a thing does not rise to that, as was also informed to us by the Hamilton County Prosecutor, Greg Garrison.
So, um, can you talk a little bit, um, Dr. Dudley, about, I know it's in the policy, but who's on the committee? And one of the things that I love is to, um, both points is that they're gonna have to read the entire selection, and there's time allowed in the, um, administrative guidelines for that.
Correct. Correct. So if, if we do have a, um, person that comes forward and feels as if we need to review some material selections, as I said, we would have a committee, and the committee is, um, made up of a district-level administrator, a school media specialist, a teacher, a building level, level administrator, and a school employee who lives within the geographic boundaries, and that's the minimum of the makeup of the committee, um, that needs to take the time to truly read the book. So if it is a, um, novel, it takes longer, you know, they have, they have time to read it from cover to cover, um, to make sure that they're taking the whole, all the material in whole, and it's not just looking at one And it's not just looking at one section, or maybe one inappropriate word in the novel, but looking at it as a whole. And so, then they would review that, they would then make a recommendation on that, and then they would share that recommendation with the patron that has cited the review. And then if the patron decides that they're not satisfied with that recommendation, then they can appeal that.
Thank you. And can you also talk a little bit about what our parents have access to, and they have for a while, in regards to library books, in regards to their students?
Yes. So our, all of our media specialists, we have a catalog, it's called Destiny, and that is all on our website, where parents can go in and they can work with their student, where they log in as their student, and they can actually sit with their student and choose which books would, you might be interested in, before they have, before they're going to the media center to check out. And so, they can see all of the books that their student is checking out, they can see all of the books that are available for their student to check out as well. So it can be, so there may be a book in there that you would rather your child not check out, and then you can share, don't check that out, you can share that with the media specialist to say, please don't have my child check that book out. So the parents definitely, in that partnership, will have the opportunity to see the books that are available. And they can also choose to say, you know, I don't feel like this is appropriate for my child. And that's certainly the parent's right to do. Thank you.
Could I respond to a couple of points here?
I have one question, though, about Destiny. Because I worked in the library at Carmel Elementary all last year. And so, when I, or the media center, sorry. When I was there, and you check out the book, would Destiny then, when you tap their card to the machine and you're doing the book, would it, if you were a parent and you said, that's not a book I would really like my child to read, at that point, would it intersect?
So, as we're, as we're working with the Destiny piece, it's, if there's a book that I don't want my child to read, then there's, you share that with the child, you can share it with the teacher, with the media specialist, with the electronic pieces of it, it's not going to stop them from doing that. However, the media specialist can put on that, as there can be notes put in under the child's.
So it really is a process that the parents have complete involvement over. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, the, this will probably be a real litmus test, is to what Jennifer said, is that if there's a few pages, a few paragraphs in a book that has, you know, some sexually explicit scenes, like between teens, that we, as long as the rest of the book has some redeeming value, that we find that okay. Is that what, are you okay with that, Jennifer?
Greg, I'm not writing the laws, I'm not a legislator. All I'm saying is that the laws that were written are pretty clear, and they say that the entirety of the manuscript must lack serious literary or artistic value. It's not and, it's or. So again, all I am, as a school board member, I'm here to uphold the laws as they are written.
Right. Let me, let me add to that a, an interpretation from the Indiana School Board Association that I participated in a couple of them.
Oh, I did too, I was on with you.
Good, very good. I asked a question about that, and he said, yeah, books are considered as a whole, but he says, for example, does a sexuality have a purpose in the context of the whole book? Or is it just about the prurient interest in sex? And then if you define prurient, it means excessively, inordinately, matters of sex, lasciviousness, lewd, lustful. So if it has that material in it, I would consider that to be inappropriate. And if I could share a couple passages from Jesus Land?
I would.
Can I, is it too offensive to share?
I don't think that that's appropriate, because we're, are you going to read us the whole book?
No, I'll read you the couple paragraphs.
But you could pick, you could pick a couple things out of any book, including the Bible, that have passages that are not appropriate for children.
Well, I guess I would like to, I guess I'm just disappointed that you folks are all fine, that we have pornographic content in books in our library, and they are in there today. I've got five in my hand that I just quickly picked, and they're quite astonishing.
Could I challenge you?
Sure.
Read the whole book. Come back to me when you've read the whole book.
Have you read the whole book?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. So you're okay with those, those sections in the book?
Have you read the entire book? Come back to me when you have read the entire book.
Okay, can I chime in here? So I see we're having a passionate discussion, and it's good that we're having a passionate discussion, because in any situation where children are involved, everyone cares and has a perspective. The challenge with the situation is, there's subjectivity around what is appropriate and what is not. That can't be removed from the situation. What I think I hear people saying is that, in order to fully ascertain if a book is appropriate or not, one needs to read the entire book according to the law. I hear that. I am a conservative parent, especially when it comes to sexually graphic content. And I have a perspective.
Same, thank you.
And I have a perspective. I also understand, in the leadership role that I'm in, I have to consider everyone's perspective, input, and the law when I make the decision. So, I'm excited that we have a policy. I'm excited that when we put a policy in place, we will evaluate whether or not it's effective or not. I am also grateful that I'm on this board, so if I feel as though the public is sharing information where we need to really reconsider what's been written, I, as a leader, have the ability to make that known to our team, and we can make a decision. I think we're at an impasse in terms of being aligned right now. So, I think we should divert to, we have a policy, and now let's see how the policy does, let's see how evaluating the books goes. And I, I do encourage parents who have content that you have questions about, to submit your request.